Vote again.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
He might be calling back in or something.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here.
Jelka.
Here.
We will now have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to receive the agenda as proposed or amended. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. We have an agenda. Item number two is public comments. Do we have anybody in the boardroom that would like to provide public comment? Do we have anyone on Zoom or on the phone that would like to provide public comment? Claims and payments. I'll make a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed. It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Mr. Perry?
This week's expenditures total $368,010.59, of which the Sheriff's Department $32,478, Maintenance Department $29,066, and finally Secondary Roads $119,276. Everything looked normal.
All right. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Item number four, project updates from department heads or elected officials. Kathy?
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. I want to give you a brief update on some generalities about the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. As you know, this was signed by President Biden yesterday, and the DOT has given us some very general information about it. So I just wanted to share that with you and what that means for the funding here for Rosen Bridges in Black Hawk County. So it does increase the money coming out of the Highway Trust Fund by 23.6% compared to the last highway funding bill. It does still retain the six, there are six core programs. It does still retain those, National Highway Performance Program, Surface Transportation Black Grant, which is how we have received most of our federal funding was through the MPO or the RTA, through a black grant program. And then there's Highway Safety Improvement Program, which we've also received some federal funding, or the DOT receives some federal funding, and then we receive it as state funds, safety funds. Then there's congestion mitigation and air quality. There's a freight program, and then a highway railroad crossing program that we are also eligible to receive money from, to help us with our railroad crossings. Two new core programs have been added. Carbon Reduction Program, which I don't know much about that yet, and then PROTECT, a PROTECT program, which my guess deals with flood reduction, and that money would come directly to state. So we don't really have much information on those two programs yet because they're new. Some of the two specific programs I wanted to talk about are bridge, bridge funding. There's a new federal highways-based bridge program that provides $27.5 billion for a bridge, bridges, and this would be outside of the SPTBG, outside of the Black Grant Program, which is how we normally receive federal funding. And the eligible uses would be highway bridge replacement, rehabilitation, preservation, protection, or construction. This would be to take care of bridges that are in poor and fair condition. Iowa would receive $86 million, and this would be twice what we have received historically, for example, in the last highway bill. So $86 million, which would be twice what we have normally received, and this money would go to cities and counties. The DOT hasn't yet worked out how that money will be distributed. So we're waiting on that, that information. And then in addition, specifically, there are two other programs that I believe will be able to take advantage of. There's a bridge investment program, which allows up to $2.5 million for each program for bridges. We may be able to tap into some of that money. And then there's a rural surface transportation grant program. That means we could work collectively with other counties or cities and submit an application to federal highways, and that's 2.5 billion, excuse me, $25 million. So there is quite a bit of new money available to us. It's going to take us, or excuse me, take the DOT probably several months before they work out how we will be, how they'll be distributing that money to us, but I will keep you informed. And we'll be, of course, looking for projects that we can spend the money on, and once we receive word on how we can do that. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads in the boardroom that would like to provide an update? How about on Zoom or online?
Good morning, Board. This is Yolando from Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs. I just wanted to take two minutes off to thank FISA and then County Health Department. They made a considerable donation to the veterans, a holiday meal, and we are planning to buy 26 Thanksgiving meals to single and veterans or disadvantaged veterans in the next coming weeks. We've already purchased the hams and turkeys through donations, and we'll be sending those out to veterans. So we had a set of goal for 25, we're at 26 now, and looking for that to count. But I appreciate the partnership that we have between the inner departments in supporting our veterans as we look to the holiday season and Thanksgiving, Christmas, and further along. And then real quick, on Saturday, I was invited to participate in a, at the city of Denver, the county premiere, but they had a rock signing or a dedication to Paul Estimilius. Paul Estimilius was a naval aviator who was shot down and didn't, his remains was never, never delivered back to the States. At one time, his mom, she seen him on KWWL as a POW, but his remains never returned back in that standpoint. But they had a dedication in the city of Denver for this unique naval hero. And it's just ironic how close we are to cities that have veteran heroes within the state line who did some great things for our country, made the ultimate sacrifice in that standpoint. It was a privilege to go up with Kelly Sullivan and a few others to meet the family and to participate in that time-honored event in that standpoint. We're still pressing forward to our holiday with our gift bags for the nursing homes, another Christmas meal for our veterans, and also Operation Christmas where the community can support a veteran, provide Christmas gifts for that veteran. All that's still in play as we move into the month of December, and then we are preparing up with our commissioners for annual FY '23. That's just something short that we were doing here at the veterans' office and just anybody.
Any questions for Yolando? Thank you, sir. Any other department heads on Zoom that would like to provide an update? Item number five, approval from the minutes from November 9th, 2021.
It's all moved.
Second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. The consent agenda is item number six. So move.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Item number seven, 7A is a resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Kim Veder, Information Technology Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same to purchase 13 HP tablets for $15,418.91 from CDW-G to be used by the Health Department. Jim?
Yeah, Kim Veder, IT Director. This is their annual request, so this is a budgeted amount. Hopefully, they still have them, but last week, CDWG, my, our sales rep called and said that they had these equipment in stock, so some of these things are waiting for months to get, so.
Yeah. All right. Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Item 7B is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public carrying bid opening to be held at 9:05 a.m. on December 7th, 2021, in Boardroom 201 of Black Hawk County Courthouse, 316 East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, for the per, for the proposed project LFM-5004 long dash 7X-07 paving on Grundy Road from Zeneta Road to just south of Highway 20. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed say no. Item 7C is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve the tentative agreement with Black Hawk County Unit 5 Sheriff and Dispatch.
Second.
Second.
Represented by Teamsters Local 238, effective January 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2024, and direct the chair to sign the collective bargaining agreement for same. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Those dates are correct? Okay. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Item 7D, we have a hearing. It was scheduled for 9:05. It is now about 9:12. This hearing is on the proposed agreement deed transfer to Holmes Welding.
Motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no.
Motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no.
Motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received and placed on file.
Second.
All right. Mike, would you like to provide comment? Or Kathy?
I can provide comment. So recall that a number of weeks back, Holmes Welding made an inquiry about a purchase of a small sliver of property along our Dale Drive Hudson Maintenance Facility. That particular sliver is little over three feet wide. At its widest point, it comes to a point on the other side. I believe it was for compliance, and Mr. Holmes is here and could comment on that, but I believe it was for compliance for some additional operation for his business. At that time, we determined that in order to fully evaluate this, we need to have a survey of that, something county wasn't going to pay for. But we did ask Mr. Holmes if he could get a survey done. He's done that. We have a good legal description. It's from Crawford Engineering. And so at this point, we took a look at what would be an appropriate price, all things considered, went before this board, I believe it was a week before last, just to see if we could set this hearing today. We did that. Notice was published. To my knowledge, there have been no comments received concerning that. If any, if there are any additional questions about the nature of the use of this sliver of land, I'd ask that you direct those to Mr. Holmes since he is here today.
All right. No written comments?
No.
Mr. Holmes, would you like to provide comment? Okay. Quick and easy. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say no. 7E is a resolution to enter in an agreement and authorize the chair to sign the same for the sale of parcel T, a triangle-shaped parcel along the edge of Black Hawk County Shop on Dale Drive in Hudson with a width of 3.18 feet. On its wide end and coming to a point at its other end, as further and more precisely described in the Crawford Engineering Survey of same, to Holmes Welding and Fabrication for the price of $500, with all costs associated with the transaction borne by the buyer. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Item 7F is a resolution to authorize the chair to sign a deed transferring to Holmes Welding and Fabrication parcel T, a triangle-shaped parcel along the edge of Black Hawk County's shop on Dale Drive in Hudson, Iowa, with a width of 3.18 feet on its wide end and coming to a point at its other end, as further and more precisely described in the Crawford Engineering Survey of same, once the purchase price is paid and certified funds provided that all costs associated with the transaction have been borne by the buyer. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
All right. Congratulations, Mr. Holmes. You purchased a significant amount of property from the county.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Item 7G, discussion in regard to contracts for services with nonprofit organizations.
Great. Well, I want to thank the board, I guess, for taking. I did make just a few copies. I know you mentioned bringing your computer, and not necessary. I know this is information that was sent to all the board, but for discussion purpose today, I thought maybe just having those copies, if you want to, you can provide them to Grant and James and Mike as well, but what they were, I know everybody's very familiar with them. Sure. Thanks. And I know Chris and Tom, you have received the copies. I hope you've had a chance to look at them. So just as a bit of, I guess, a recap for where we're at with this and the contract for services with nonprofits. Last year, when the pandemic was at its peak, there were counties that were contacting the state auditor's office, and they had questions on funding nonprofits, and they were looking for ways to help their residents with food and housing and utilities during that time. And those questions, I think, are really what prompted the directive that we received later. And on March 26th of this year, or close to that time, I think we could verify the date, but, but it was close to that time, we received a copy of the state auditor's, Rob Sands directive, and it was regarding donations to nonprofits, and that I did provide a copy of, and I've really highlighted some sections of that. But we followed up. I think we were very surprised to learn that this was something that had been in place for years, and I don't think anybody's even determined a date how far back, but that other counties had been doing. We weren't alone, that there were several counties, and many that I've talked to, I know, that just didn't know that this was a practice that we weren't allowed to do. And I think the minute we saw it, we followed up with Mike Trinan, obviously, our county attorney, followed up with the auditors. I know James did with Clifton Larson. And as I said, I think many of us were surprised by this. But in reading the directive, it did say this communication was to remind us that the Iowa Constitution prohibits donations. So we immediately ceased, I think, ceased the remaining payments that we were making to the nonprofits that had contacted us for funding requests. And I think that was about, whatever time it was, I'm going to say, we stopped the last quarter payments for fiscal year '21 contributions that we would have been making. And I think that's the sheets that I also provided with you today, that there were about four agencies on there totaling $22,500, and those are listed. We don't have to talk about those until later if somebody wishes to. But we also ceased the funding for the requests for agencies for fiscal year '22 that had been approved in January of this year. And there were five agencies in that group totaling $76,000, and those are listed on those sheets as well. And May 7th, then, we sent out a short note, and the board authorized James to go ahead with a note to the agencies about the auditor's directive, and I think he mentioned that he included the directive in with it, but told those agencies that we would not be making payments on their, on what we had commitments for, and that we'd be in contact with them if anything were to change or we found out more information. And over the summer, I've had several conversations with several counties who've mentioned that they just transitioned to a contract agreement, as was stated in Rob Sands directive. So I, like I said, I think several were surprised that the way they were doing it was claimed, whether it was donations or contributions or grants, whatever they were calling it, wasn't the proper way to be doing it. So they were asking us to do it correctly, and, and actually providing in this communication that we could do it, and there were ways to do it. We just had to go into a contract agreement. So as I included in the packet sent out to all of you last week, I did request from a couple of the counties that were close to us and I was in conversation with, that had done this, to provide us a copy of their agreements. And so Grundy provided theirs, Braemer County also provided theirs. And there are various, I think, ways of doing it. Some did it as simple as one-page documents. Others, like Braemer, was quite extensive, was more of a service contract and multiple pages, but that it can be done. And so I think the things that, obviously, Mike, please interrupt if there's anything I'm saying incorrectly or something legal, because we do want your opinion on this as well. But the copies that we saw, I said, the things that we needed to prove according to this directive, that we could do it, a contract for services or a 2080 agreement was something that we could do, and the contract would include obligations and benefits for both parties. So what public service we felt the organizations were providing for us as a county or for our residents, and then us in turn could, would, our commitment would be paying for those services. So it was something we could do. So I think the questions we had to ask ourselves is, is there a public purpose served by the organization? What are the services? And what is the cost for those services?
And I would say, Supervisor Layland, you've hit the nail on the head precisely. The real question here is, if there is a desire to provide funding to any of these organizations, we need to identify clearly what public purpose the organization is serving. What, and that, that is not something that has to be statutorily mandated, but rather serves some purpose. You know, think health, education, housing, any number of things that have been deemed by one or more public entities to be an appropriate service to provide to a community. Once you've, once you've made that determination and you've, you've come to an amount, well then you need to enter into a contract for services. A 2080 agreement is an alternative way. That was what the state auditor mentioned in his letter. However, he's later clarified through his office that a, that a contract for services simply, similar to what we did earlier this year for rental assistance and housing and utility assistance, that can be entered into. And so it really depends on what the board wants to do, whether we want to revisit some of these. I do note that I think, you know, sometimes a line can be difficult to draw, but if you're talking about a capital improvement project, I don't think that establishes services for a public purpose. But if you are talking, you know, about whether it be various aid to people, whether it be various services to people with special needs, those are conversations that legally I think we can have.
So, yeah, so my point today was really twofold, I guess. It was, I mean, opening up discussion on this, and obviously, I didn't put it on for voting or anything because I wanted discussion and us to have time to consider this. But I guess twofold, those, number one was, do we as a county want to continue working with agencies as we have for years with a service agreement in place rather than doing it as we had? And secondly, I guess I'd like us to consider, because we approved and budgeted funds to agencies listed for fiscal year '21 and '22, and we did, as I say, committed to them, budgeted for them, and have them currently, do we want to fulfill, I guess, the commitments that we made, provided they meet the requirements of services? Because we are still seven and a half months into the year, I guess, seven and a half months remaining, for those commitments that could be made for '22 especially. I mean, it's not like we had to start them in July, but because we have the remainder of this year even for '22, so.
Comments?
Yeah, please.
I think it's a dialogue that probably keep open for our upcoming budget process, which is really only a few months off. That's normally the place that we normally address if we're going to give to any agencies. I think it's important to note for the public that under Iowa code, there are certain services that the county has to mandate, and we've done it over the years through community services, and the county was performing those services. And then, oh, probably about 15 years ago, when we hired Bob Lincoln as director, he decided to shift those services from county employees doing it to a agreement with three different agencies, which covers housing, utilities, and so forth. So we do currently have agreements with, I think it was EMA, Jesse Cosby, and also Operation Threshold, and those are required through Iowa code, I believe. So we've been meeting our thing. I don't have a problem in keeping an open mind, but I would rather we wait till budget time to go through it again to see if we're even interested in doing that. I didn't hear from Mike. Did you say we could do something different than a 2080 agreement?
Yes. Supervisor Little, we can, we can just enter into a services contract with whatever agency that is providing those services.
Okay. I think by addressing us a budget time, give us the board members some time to do a little research on their own. I know a lot of the agencies locally around the last year or so through COVID have been receiving various monies that normally they wouldn't be receiving due to the various funding that's been available. So again, I, I think the proper time to address it again would be at budget time, which is going to be basically a couple of months or less away that we're going to enter that and go from there. So I think the county has been pretty generous with what we currently have done, and we'll just have to take a look at it at budget time to see if the board's interested in going any further with any of the other agencies right now.
With the budget process approaching, would it be a good time to entertain requests from agencies as we have done in the past?
That's, that's what I was about to say. I agree that decisions we would make would definitely be done very much at time, because that's definitely when all those things should be decided. But now is the time that we would want agencies to be preparing the proposals that they would bring to us. So I want to thank Supervisor Layland for bringing this forward for all of us, and I think it's something we should have in place, and it doesn't mean that we're guaranteed that we're going to fund places and fund everything that we funded in the past, because maybe it doesn't all fit into services being provided. But I think this is a good thing to have in place, both for our budget process, but also if we decide to fund any activities of nonprofits with American Rescue Plan money, we're also going to need this type of contract. So I think this is a good time to be kind of hammering this out and having this in place. It was clearly upsetting, you know, last year when we filed this news out, but at the end of the day, this is probably the better way to handle it, will have even a higher level of accountability over what's being done with this public money. And so at the end of the day, this was kind of a headache that we had to go through. It's probably better in the long run.
Mr. Schwartz brings up a good question, Mr. Perry. Can we use ARP funds for any situation such as this?
Yes, we will. And he is also correct, and it would require a contract, very similar to any funding for any of these agencies.
That current $25 million, we would be able to then, during budget time, if the courts identifies some agencies, we could use CARE Act money.
Correct.
I think that'd be good.
So I'm wondering if we don't need to put some kind of criteria on our website, probably soon, so that we can have different agencies submit still for the next year for fiscal year '23.
My question for you, James, how are you going to follow up with that? You know, you're saying that we can give them money, and yet, in the next breath, there's agencies that could, you know, you give them the money. that could, you know, you give them the money, doesn't necessarily mean they're going to spend it the way we give it to them, you know, for what purpose? And then we could run into problems there, right?
Yeah. So there's, there's, it's a little twofold on, on that, on that question. The first, the first point I wanted to make is, with this directive and the contract, the funding of these agencies would have to look vastly different than what we've, what we've done in the past. In, in the past, we've written them a check typically at the beginning of the fiscal year, middle of fiscal year, or quarterly, whenever that is. If we were to enter in a contract, I would, I would want to look at how different counties are doing this. But it would almost be better if they were to send us invoices on, on things that they would purchase, and then we would pay them back out of that, out of that fund. These, these funds need to be, these, they need to be accounted for on a, on a much different level than, than what we've done in the past. And so I would like to see how that is. The second point about the ARP funds is there were comments made, and that's why agencies haven't been brought up to this point yet, is that with the space needs study, we don't know what kind of, what kind of obligations we are going to be looking at down the pike. And so there were comments made that we, we want to look at not spending too much or not overcommitting on these dollars prior to space, any space needs study. And so that's why agencies haven't necessarily been brought up to this point. But that's a conversation that we can definitely have. It's just, that was, that was brought up in the ARP meetings as well as in the board session. So I guess any directive, I mean, I'm, I'm fine to roll with, but that was just kind of the comments that were made, so.
Well, in the past, what was our obligation to these nonprofits? The total obligation? Again, I can't remember the exact amount.
Less than $100,000.
You mean total?
Yeah.
For the last year?
Yeah.
$76,000 was our, what we committed to last, this year, I guess it's this year. We committed to it for last budget cycle, but it was for this year.
Correct. Yep. $76,000 budgeted for this fiscal year that we are currently in. And then, as Supervisor Leyland pointed out, there was $22,500 that were unfunded from prior year. If that is something that you want to fund, that would have to come out of fund balance.
Yes.
But that, that's past fiscal year, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So we're into a new fiscal year. If we were to do anything, we would address the current fiscal year rather than going back into another year. The question I have is, when we were allocating the monies through Solid Waste, I believe that program lasted about 10 or 12 years. That's really where the funding came from.
Yeah.
One of the criteria was that any money that the county allocated was for services only and not for salaries. And I don't know if we've drifted away from that through community services, because I thought I heard at one time that we were paying for wages or salaries. And the commitment that I always heard, it was for services only. And by James stating, if we do use CARE Act money and they submit invoices, we can assure that we're paying for services and not paying for, for wages, personnel, administrative fees, I guess is what I'm saying. And I think we kind of strayed away from that a little bit. And I think we should keep an eye on that a little closer.
Well, I don't recall us ever funding salaries, but I was going to say we'd be paying for the services is the way I'd see it, not for items purchased or expecting invoices of equipment or things like that that they'd done.
Exactly. But I, I'm open to address it again here in a few months at budget time and even address if we want to do the current fiscal year funding that we approved earlier.
Well, Tom, we really need to make a decision if we want to go forward. And we don't need to do it today. I'm saying, we just need to consider if we're going to go forward or would like to make those commitments that we did and, and I guess follow through with those. We need to do that yet, as soon as we could, just to kind of get that into this year, fiscal year '22's accounting. But I, again, we really need to determine if we're going to fund or not. This can certainly be done during budget. But whether or not we want to accept those, the criteria, or those, I guess, the applications or the submitted, what would you call those, Mike? The contract services?
They would have, there, there'd be a couple of things. First of all, we'd probably prepare the, the contracts in a lot of the cases or have a standard form that would, that would be to our satisfaction. It's important that we, if we're soliciting requests to be paid for services, these organizations need to identify the services that they are performing for the county so that we can evaluate whether those services in fact are a pub, are serving a public purpose.
And we're going to need to have that information by us decided by our budget sessions, whether they be qualified or not, right? So to me, we need to give them some leeway to, to make up those contract services.
That would be correct, both for fiscal '23 and prior to full consideration of, of revisiting fiscal '22.
Yes. Before we'd fund fiscal year '22, we'd need that contract in place almost, right?
We, we would need to, we would need to have discussed them and come to a contract that would be agreeable to both sides. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
This could involve a lot of discussions, but I, you know, we, we had the process up in place to accept these requests. From what I'm hearing from the board is, within the next week or so, we should open that process up again so we can start receiving these requests and then evaluate them during the budget process.
Should we also then evaluate what we feel? Is that a good time, Mike? Or do we wait till we get their contracted services on fiscal year '22 before we'd evaluate? Because some of those we looked at, I think, and thought they were capital improvements. You know, one was a repair maybe of a parking lot. Another was purchase of a technology upgrade, which doesn't really meet the criteria for services for Black Hawk County residents.
Yeah.
And we've got one on there that would be an ongoing cost that we talked about for, like, building at a warming shelter or buying a building for a warming shelter. And then we got it on here for $10,000 for ongoing costs. So you got to look at these pretty close, you know. Looking at most of these agencies, like the North Star, I sit on that board, the parking lot, I think we've moved forward with some of that already by ourself. But also along that same line, we, all those, all those boards do have people hired to go out and solicit and raise money. So I think we're going beyond the call of duty on some of this stuff. Myself, just my feeling, but I, I'm willing to talk to it at budget time. And I think we need that time to wait to get all this fax in on some of these places and go from there.
For future years.
There are some, there are some good agencies out there. And I, I'd almost want to, I don't know if that's going over the line, Mike, but asking for the executive director and the board, or not board, but the members, the employees, their pay structure on all these places.
Well, and I, I, I don't even, I, I don't think there's anything that prohibits anyone from making an inquiry as to how these, these entities are run. In fact, I think that's a completely legitimate inquiry, because if you're wanting to know how your public purpose services dollars are being spent, that's going to, that's going to give you some, some kind of indication of that. To get back to Linda's question earlier about the timing of it, the only concern I would raise is that if you are seriously considering revisiting the 2022, or the fiscal '22 commitments, it might, from an accounting standpoint, make sense to do that more sooner rather than later. I imagine we're going to have to formulate some type of an inquiry of these entities as to the public services they perform. There will be some, some time that it'll take to get a response on that. We'll have to put together the contracts or at least put together some kind of a sample contract. So when you're having these discussions, you know what those terms are going to be. The nice thing about it is we have some forms for all of this via our neighboring counties. But having said that, we're, we're obviously going to, going to look at them through our own lens and make sure that, that they are to our liking rather than just some county's liking.
For fiscal year '20.
Linda, the point, the point I was trying to make across, maybe I wasn't clear, Linda, was any funding that I would support or could support is for services. And you had mentioned the parking lot. To me, that's not services. And to me, that is something that I wouldn't support.
Yeah, I would agree, Tom.
I think true services helping people and not something physical like a building, a roof, a parking lot, or administrative fees. To me, that is their cost, and it should be something that we have to invest in. So that's the point I was trying to get across.
No, no, I appreciate that, Tom. And I agree with you. I think that we probably still need to take some type of board action, since we did approve a couple of those for fiscal year '22. We'd maybe need to take a board action that, for reasons stated in the directive and for our feelings, I guess, that we are not going to be supporting those. Does that sound fine to you? Would that work?
Yeah. I, I think, I think what we have to do seems that time has changed. And I don't know if some of these agencies that we previously voted that we were going to contribute to, if they've received other monies and so forth, or if they even need any kind of a contribution now. So I think we have to visit each one individually. I, I don't think we should act too quick. I know I heard Mike say we should do that sooner than later. But we should also make sure we do due diligence and make sure that if we're going to further commit to our '22, that the agency is still in merit of needing it or should get it. And then obviously, we're going to come up with some agreements. So I don't think that process is going to happen too quick. Obviously, it'll happen sometime during the fiscal year '22 if we agree to. But I don't have a problem revisiting those again. But again, that example of the parking lot, that would certainly, to me, isn't services, certainly isn't supplied support with county money.
Well, and I don't mean, Tom, the overall process would be that fast. And I don't think Mike did either. But I think we can start on it. As I think, I don't know whether everybody remembers or I haven't had a chance to take a look at the Bramer County information. But they had gone out with a letter that requested that the, the agencies, which we could identify here, which ones we would send that to, and that would only be a handful. I think we only had five that we funded. But asking them for what their contracted services were going to be, I think it was similar to that. It's what they stated, I think.
Yeah.
Did Bramer County physically, did Bramer County, did they actually do some service agreements with agencies during this current fiscal year?
Yes, they were included in the packet. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you know what the dollar amount was for Bramer County, that they actually committed to services?
I, I'm not sure. We might even have that in those agreements, but I can't tell you right off the top of my head what that number was.
I'd just be curious to see what they committed, be in a smaller county like that.
Oh, they did quite. The couple that they provided were good-sized contracts, so.
Well, and Mr. Little, if memory serves, I, I believe there was one, for example, that was around $27,000 to one agency that was providing a number of different services. But I might, I, I would have to revisit that. One thing that's very important that we all need to keep in mind, and Linda, I believe you and I had a conversation in the past about this, where I mentioned the notion of almost having to open it up for bidding, in a sense. It's not, not bidding per se, but when we solicit the, this input on services, we, we need to solicit it openly so as not to be showing any kind of, you know, favoritism, any, like, we're picking and choosing the, the organizations that can provide these services. So I think it's a, it, it becomes appropriate that we, we make sure the process is very open and that anyone can make their pitch. And that if we deem as a board that one agency providing services A, B, and C is better than the next agency doing it, well, then maybe we go with the, the first one.
What if they're, let's say, for example, they're the only agency in the area that provides a particular service?
Well, then, then they're the only agency that provides that service. And if you want to provide that service and it's serving a public purpose, then, then you decide to what extent you wish to fund that agency.
Because we made a commitment to five different organizations at the beginning of the budget process for fiscal year '22. Now, based on your opinion, the parking lot does not fall under the threshold as to what we can provide assistance for, but the four others do.
That's correct.
So I think the appropriate way to proceed based on our commitment is, we have $61,000 that we budgeted. We recontact these four agencies, Friends of Iowa, Iowa Legal Aid, the Food Bank and Riverview Center, and discuss with them, draft contract and the services they'll provide. And we honor that commitment that we entered into at the beginning of the year. And I think timeliness is a factor, because we're already jumping into our next budget cycle. I see there's some representatives of some of these organizations here, but if Mr., I, I think the majority of the board feels like we should honor these commitments. And if that's something we needed to get a vote on, I guess we can get it on the next agenda. But I think it's incumbent upon us, based on the budget we established, that we honor these four entities and we clean it up with contracts.
And I think, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think the board, being such a large county, Black Hawk County is, and there's a lot of nonprofit agencies, I kind of got the feeling over the years that some of our agencies felt that it was an automatic that they receive X amount of dollars. And I've always felt, and I think on the Solid Waste, we had guidelines.
I'm going to speak to him.
When we were issuing those funds, that if we funded, say, a nonprofit this year under, say, FY '22, that they would not be eligible for FY '23. So we could kind of spread it around to other agencies. And if you kind of look at, over the years, we've got the same agencies that felt entitled that we should be giving to them every year. And I think that we should probably kind of spread it around a little bit and still be fiscally responsible, because after all, we have other priorities first. And then this is kind of a secondary deal here. But I wouldn't have a problem readdressing the, the commitments that we've made for FY '22. I'm not saying I'd support them all, but we can certainly take a look at them again, if that's what Linda was looking for.
If I could respond to that point real quick, it, it definitely makes sense to look at other agencies other than ones that we've simply funded in the past. In fact, it's required that we do. But I don't think in that process that we can then go and say, well, agencies we've funded in the past are ineligible. What we need to be looking at is who is providing the best services at the best price, according to our judgment of what, what the public purpose that needs to be served is. And I hope that makes sense.
I think, Mike, with solid waste monies, which funded our agencies for 10, 12 years, I think that criteria is exactly what I said. We tried to spread it around. So if you receive funding this year, you aren't eligible next year.
No, that wasn't true, Tom. I mean, like, several of those.
Those are the criterias.
And I know we did solid waste funding, and that was something that was very useful for us as a county, I think we felt. And I didn't know for how long we did it, but I know that changed in like 2013 or 14. And from that time on, then the county has assumed those obligations and taken a look at what we wanted to fund. And I, I know last night I took a look at our application, because I was kind of curious of what it had said on our web. And, and it said, you know, while we called it a grant, it's, it's still said, these funds may be used for programs or projects that directly benefit the residents of Black Hawk County. So I think that's where I see our responsibility, where we felt it was in those organizations at that time.
Can we get it on the agenda for the next meeting to consider our financial obligations, discuss and consider our financial obligations to nonprofits for fiscal year '22? And if we as a board approve it, that would give authority to Mr. Trynon and Mr. Perry to reach out to these nonprofits and draw up contracts to honor our obligation of at least $61,000.
Yes, because it's just the four that we'd really be considering.
Correct.
That sounds good to me. And I think, you know, the question of accountability was raised. Many of these nonprofits, especially the larger ones, because the different funding types they receive are required to have independent audits every year. So that could be a question that we place on our application. When was your last independent audit held by whom? And you can request copies of those if you're concerned. Now, some of the smaller nonprofits, you know, might not have the resources that they're doing that on an annual basis, but those larger ones will. So that's one more level of reassurance that they can be out there for us.
All right. Do we need any more discussion on this item?
I do have a question, Mr. Chair. So moving forward into FY '23, typically, we would have gotten these applications out already. Is that some, I mean, with, with have gotten these applications out already. Is that some, I mean, with, with time being kind of a factor now that we're slowly moving into December here, is that something that we do want to look at? Is not, is just kind of updating that application?
Yes. I think we should, but again, I wonder if that's not an issue we should put on the agenda for next week-
Okay.
...so that we can hear from the entire board. Let's specify that, come up with language to put that on the agenda, and we can let the board as a whole decide. Because I think time is of the essence on that, because yes, in the past, we'd already received those requests.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Obviously, we don't get too many.
Since this, since this isn't the monies that we're going to be getting from the government, I'd like to see us leave all them on there if we're going to be discussing, because we're being unfair to some of them by not, by saying, oh, now the rules have changed on you, you know. So like I said, I said on a couple of boards, they do great things. They deserve a fair handshake on it, I believe.
Well, I think-
And my thought, another thought is, if we're going to do it, half the year is over, split those costs in half, give them half of what they were going to get because the year is half over. You don't go back and pay somebody for work they didn't do.
Well, there's, they still had the need for the year, though.
We don't know that.
Yeah, well, they can certainly-
Well, if that's the case, then, none of, we shouldn't give out money to any of these because there's a hell of a lot of people out on the street that are in need, and we're giving taxpayers money away. Yes or no?
We're not giving it away. I think we're putting it to use for our citizens. It's going to work for the benefit of the residents here.
But-
Can't we, can't we use CARE Act money for this FY22? I thought I heard we could.
Well, even if we can, that doesn't, that would take care of maybe what we have right now, but we just look at-
It looks like we could, Tom. Yes.
Yeah, if we can use CARE Act money, then, I mean, obviously, the board's going to have to make a decision, majority of the people want us to fund them all, but if we're going to fund any of it, FY22, I think it should be with CARE Act money.
Hmm. Yes, if that's-
Well, I guess, why is that, Tom, when we committed for it, budgeted for it, and taxed for it?
Well, because we can use it. I mean, the money's there, $25 billion. Why wouldn't we use it, Linda, rather than keeping it laying there?
Well, I think-
If the money, if the money's there to be used for this purpose, then why wouldn't we use it?
Well, I don't, I don't think it's-
Rather than tax dollars.
It's not to be used for commitments that we made previously, which is what this, this particular one would do. It would be used for things in the future.
Well, it, it can be, what do you mean, it can't be?
I'm, I'm not saying it can't be. I said, the money that they've specified that was there for us, they've talked about us not having to, not use it really to buy down taxes for taxpayers, that we're not supposed to utilize it for things that we would normally be budgeting for, and all of a sudden, now we have this cash available to us, and we're going to use that instead of using our funding. So those types of things, I think, we have to be careful with. And, but if there are needs out there in our community, I think they've said, like, from a nonprofit standpoint, whether it's utility, rent, food, whatever those kinds of things are, we certainly can make decisions on, on distributing some of those. It was very clear that we can give funding to nonprofits if we want to with that ARPA money.
Well, I guess then, to kind of, you know, to agree or disagree, I guess that'll have to be part of the motion, how we're going to fund it.
Sure, I'm sure.
Sure.
That very well could make a difference, whether it gets funded or not. So we'll just make that part of the motion on whether we fund the nonprofit, and then how do we fund it.
Well, here, I have a question for you, Tom. If we don't, if we don't fund what we already committed for, that money goes back into the general fund, right?
Exactly, exactly. Just like a lot of other funding does.
Yes. And we've already said, our reserves are good, very strong reserves, and they're higher this year than they were last year. And so I guess my question would be, why would we not just use our taxes for that, that we already have appropriated, since we have a very comfortable reserve fund?
I guess my answer to that would be, I guess, when we vote on it, I guess, the majority of the board will determine that.
Oh, no, I don't mean that we won't determine it. I just meant my question was to, to look at it that way, that we don't want to just keep banking money as well. So if there's-
We're not, yeah, we're not banking money. You know, the reserves, I've always said before, the reserves look good today, Linda, but next year, the year after, it could be a complete about.
I agree.
That's why you try to stay on top of it.
And we have done a very good job of that. We've all agreed that that's what, we have a comfortable reserves right now. But that's what I'm just saying, if we don't fund these out of our, our funds for currently, that we have budgeted for it, that we just add those to the reserves and the reserves grow by not utilizing it. So that's all, Tom.
That'll be a decision made by the majority of the board.
Yeah.
I, I do, I do think we just need a clear answer to the question, since it is very clear that, that new projects going forward can definitely utilize American Rescue Plan money, but it's, it would be a point that we would want to clarify, since we did already make this commitment prior to the passage of this legislation. So I'm not completely sure that this fiscal year 22 money or allocations would be, would be eligible. So we would want to clarify that before we would take a vote like that, I think.
I'll clarify that next week.
For next week.
And if the contract, say, starts January 1st for one of these, any one of these organizations, it almost seems like we could utilize ARP funding for it. Our reserves look good this morning, too, until my car broke down.
That's exactly.
You never know what pops up.
Yep, overnight. Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, I guess we can move on to item 7H, which is discussion in regard to county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19. Dr. N'bonye?
Good morning, Board. And if you say Bonye, Blackhawk County Public Health. So I was hoping to give more positive news, but we are still in the high. We've had about 120 cases since the 12th. So we're, we're in the high. And so, right now, we have about 68.3% of Blackhawk County residents ages 12 and over that have received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine, and 64% of our county is fully vaccinated. A new number for you all, we're monitoring the 5 to 11 vaccinations in the county. So right now, we have 971 kiddos between the age of 5 to 11 that have been vaccinated, which is about 5% of our population of that age group. Any questions for me?
Some of the good news.
In the last four days, we're averaging 30 cases a day of new COVID.
Yeah, and more, 100.
What's causing that? Do the contract tracers know?
I mean, it's, we're seeing that the majority are unvaccinated individuals.
Well, ours are unvaccinated, yet most of them in the United States are vaccinated that are becoming ill.
The majority of the people that are, have COVID here in Blackhawk County are unvaccinated. Yeah.
Okay. So it's different than national average.
Yeah.
I guess I have a question for Mr. Trynon in regard to a federal court decision out of the Fifth Circuit, I believe, which impacts Texas, Mississippi, Louisiana. That decision has no impact on Iowa.
It can be used as, as precedent here. It doesn't have to be followed by courts in this area. My understanding was that people nationwide were kind of looking at this, however, as, as putting the brakes for the time being because of this injunction that's issued by a federal court. It's putting the brakes right now on enforcement of the employer vaccine mandate. And I believe that's your understanding as well, isn't it, Amanda?
Right, yep. So Amanda from Blackhawk County Human Resources. And yes, so it's my understanding, as early as today or the end of this week, that there's going to be a lottery system with the US Court, US Circuit Court of Appeals, where a lot of this is getting consolidated, all these petitions regarding the OSHA ETS for vaccination and testing. So that court, whomever's selected, is then going to determine whether or not that preliminary stay is going to continue, be altered, or lifted. So it's changed, you know, it's pretty fluid right now at this point. One thing to mention, though, is that there is also the CMS interim final rule, which that preliminary stay does not apply to that, but it does require a vaccination, a mandatory vaccination policy for any, basically, healthcare settings that are receiving Medicare or Medicaid funding. And that is something that our health department, we have been working closely together on. So there's a few things to kind of take into account as to which lawsuit applies, so which-
But, but my understanding was that the, the injunction that was entered by the Fifth Circuit does not impact the CMS requirement.
That's what it said, right.
Yeah. And so, and this could very well be, be heard by the Supreme Court relatively soon.
Yes.
I mean, it's got to go to the Circuit Court first.
The OSHA one can't. The OSHA, where it's, if you have 100 or more employees, you have to either implement a mandatory vaccination program, or if you don't do that, you have to implement regular testing for unvaccinated workers. That one is the one that's a bit on hold. It's the other one that's driven by the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services that applies to our health department, where there is no test-out option. And that one says that, basically, by December 5th, you know, we will be in compliance with, with that. And what's up at stake is that, you know, the agreements that we have in place may be voided if we're not in compliance with that. So, so there's two things kind of going on that affect our employees here. And my goal to keep you guys abreast of everything that's going on with the OSHA ETS, and then the CMS one as well. I believe a lawsuit was filed by our governor. So that one may change as well. But the only one that's really on hold is the OSHA ETS applicable to those that have 100 or more employees.
And I believe the governor's suit also addressed the requirement that federal contractors vaccinate. So that is also up in the air, but I don't think there's been an injunction on that yet either.
Right.
So our direction is clear as mud right now.
It is, it really is.
Weekly updates.
I want us to be prepared for this, but I, you know, we're handling it very sensitively. I think right now, what we're planning to do is just ask for staff to voluntarily provide their proof of vaccination or vaccination status. That is something that we would need to know to be compliant with either order, but it's, with the OSHA one, it may change the dates. Right now, the December 5th date and January 4th date are a bit up in the air, but I want us to be prepared in the event that, go ahead.
Regardless of injunctions and court decisions, could Blackhawk County, for instance, voluntarily put that into effect?
Absolutely, yep. That does not, this, you know, you could voluntarily decide to do any of these options. So right now, this is kind of more of a guidance for us to enforce, that we have to enforce like any other OSHA rule or CMS guideline. So, but that is correct. And we've seen that not as much in the counties. I think Polk County was the only one that actually went ahead and decided to create, you know, just implement their own ahead of this, but the remaining counties have pretty much kind of been waiting to see how things play out.
Well, I believe in the vaccination, but I don't believe in mandates to get vaccinated.
And there's a lot to take into consideration with the testing option as well. And we will kind of dive into that more. But yeah, we will, you know, depending on how things move along, there's two options here with the policies if it's a, if the injunction isn't, you know, upheld.
Have they defined testing? I mean, what does it include?
So they've defined testing to some extent. I am still looking into that a little bit more closely, but it can't be done by the employee themselves. It would have to be done by a healthcare professional. It could also be done by the employer, and that's something I have yet to speak with our health department about. I'm right now trying to, I'm kind of ballparking it, that based on the vaccination rates across the country and in our county, that I would just guess that we probably are about 60 to 70% for staff that are vaccinated. So those are all things that we'll kind of want to take into account to determine if we want to do the mandate vaccination policy, or if we want to implement a regular testing. But, so there's, yeah, there's a, a lot to consider here and a short amount of time.
Amanda, how do you arrive at those numbers? You stated that you figured X amount percent is vaccinated for the county.
Well, we kind of did, did that based on the review that we had with our prospective consultants and preferred one, based on just the charges of what the, what the healthcare plan is actually paid for in vaccination rates, I guess. And then also, again, just going off of what, what we've been seeing across the state of Iowa and throughout the country, that generally, it seems like that 70% is a kind of a ballpark estimate of where we're at. But as we ask people to provide a vaccination, proof of vaccination, we'll have a better number in the coming weeks to know, you know, how many we truly have that are not vaccinated.
Sure, it'll be important. For testing capacity, the health department does not have testing capacity to be able for that to be an option. I just want the board to be aware.
So I suppose we'd have to contract with somebody that is?
We could use ARP funds?
Yeah, that's what some have done, unfortunately.
Maybe.
If we wanted to, yeah.
You know, what concerns me is we have good employees. I don't want to get embroiled. I, I will stand behind an employee that faces a potential termination for not providing their vaccination card, not getting vaccinated. We need to retain our employees. I, I find some of this troubling, that's all.
It, it's also important to remember that there are various statuses, statuses of exemption that an employee can seek as well. And without, without further clarity on defining those, I think the trend has been to allow those exemptions. Is that a fair statement, Amanda?
Yes, I would say that is fair. And that is, within even the policy of mandating a vaccine, there are, you know, exemptions that we would need to consider and allow. But there is no exemption for a weekly test.
And there have been counties considering using ARPA funds for that because it was to fight COVID.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of really affects-
Makes sense.
So it's a possibility, but-
Yeah. But we would, I mean, there's, again, you know, yeah, we have to kind of do quite a bit of gathering of information to really figure out, you know, the full extent and how we'd want to move forward and what even operationally this looks like for testing, as to, you know, how people are going to go and go get that test done. And so there's a lot of considerations that we need to kind of take into account for both programs. But right now, with that preliminary stay, and, you know, we'll see how events unfold in the coming days and weeks. But again, it's just my goal to make sure that we're at least prepared to, to move forward and to be in compliance.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
All right.
All right, item number eight, information from the board.
I'd like to send out our condolences to the James Schmidt family and the Bill Burns family. James Schmidt, his wife sits on the board for Honor Flight, and Bill Burns is a veteran that I've known for a long time. He's from Skowaski, Iowa. And also, along the line, you know, Londa was talking about earlier, Christmas meal. Evansville Ambits is going to have a Rita Cummings Christmas meal on December 25th for veterans and anyone else that deems it necessary to come, you know, for, for a meal. It's going to be free will offerings. They've done it for 28 years. And Mrs. Cummings died two weeks ago, so we're going to carry the torch for her onwards. So that's my report. One question for you, in regards to mandates and stuff, I agree with you, but when we were kids, how, how come we had to get the shots as kids?
We weren't as-
Divided nation.
Just like when we joined the military. I don't know how many shots I got.
Yes, I mean-
And I don't know for what.
Six years old, when you got shots, before you could even go to school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were less informed.
We were well-informed back then.
Yeah, we had social media.
Yeah.
Linda, do you have anything?
No, we're feeling by.
Tom?
All fine.
Chris?
Nope, I'm just grateful for the technology that allowed me to, needless to worry, my car didn't start this morning, so I was grateful that I was able to zoom in.
Yeah.
Well, this morning, a Waterloo police officer was involved in a shooting. The individual, the citizen has died, from what I've learned. I don't know much more than what the media has given us, but these can be very dynamic, emotional events for a community. So I'm asking for, you know, I pray, I'm asking for prayers and thoughts for everybody involved.
involved, and also, I'm asking for calm in our community, because these situations, situations can highly spiral out of control. So let's wait for the investigation to unfold, and let's learn the facts, and let's just let, let calm our heads prevail. All right, item number nine, our canvas. We need a recess?
Karen's on her way here, and I did want to read a statement about how this was not on the agenda-
Yes.
-in a timely fashion, so this will be entered into the minutes. Due to a miscommunication, the second-tier canvas for the November 2nd city school election was left off the original agenda for the November 16th Board of Supervisors. Iowa law requires that this canvas be conducted on the second Monday or Tuesday after the day of the election, which in this case would be November 15 or 16. In order to comply with the applicable statute, the Board of Supervisors invokes Section 21.4 of the Iowa Open Meetings Law, which allows the board to address an agenda item without the required 24-hour notice, provided that the nature of the good cause justifying that departure from the normal requirements shall be stated in the minutes, and that's the good cause that we will be stating in the minutes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Veder. Usually, I need a recess, and I don't. Mr. White?
Yes.
All right.